Good morning. Today's Tuesday, May 2nd, 2023, and this is a regular meeting of the Kings County Board of Supervisors. Each vote today will be a verbal vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion in the second regarding each item we are taking up today, there will be a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Rusty Robinson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Thank you. Will you please rise for the invocation? Before we do that, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Vice Chairman Supervisor Verboon. Supervisor, the floor is yours.
On Friday, April 28th, I lost my dad, and I'd like to have a moment of silence. Thank you.
Thanks Supervisor, and we do want to thank your father for his service in the Air Force and condolences from the county of Kansas.
Thank you.
At this point, Sergeant Nate Ferrier, will you please do us the honor of the invocation?
I would be honored to.
Good morning. Let's bow our heads in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for another day to get together and have a meeting. Lord, we just praise you for the cooler weather that's come. We thank you for all of your incredible blessings. We specifically lift up Doug and his family during this difficult time, and we just pray for comfort and peace as they deal with the loss of his father. Lord, we thank you for this weekend, this past weekend, and the Corcoran event. It was truly an incredible day, and you helped to put that together, Lord, and we just thank you and praise you for that and for all of our veterans. Lord, we just pray for wisdom and for you to guide and direct this meeting today as decisions are being made, and we just ask for an extra special blessing on the Board of Supervisors and all the department heads in the county. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to recall that our purpose is to stand as one nation under God, indivisible, with everlasting testable.
Next item on the agenda is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Madam Clerk, is anyone online?
I have no written correspondence, and the first speaker card I have is Michelle Brown.
All right. Good morning.
Good morning. Michelle Brown, Hanford, California, and I am the Executive Director of Main Street Hanford. Supervisor Verboon, I want to offer my condolences. I know that loss, so you'll be in my thoughts and prayers. I wanted to come and let you know that Thursday Night Marketplace begins this Thursday night. We will be there rain or shine, and we're really looking forward to the season. We're going to be starting out strong with over 100 vendors, and we have all of our regular farmers coming back this year with a few new ones. One of our focuses this year is going to be addressing food insecurity. We've partnered with Adventist Health and Family Healthcare Network to really market the fact that we do accept EBT and WIC in our certified farmer's market. So we have advertisements in all of the Adventist Health facilities and then as well as Family Healthcare Network, but really pushing that through social media as well. We did see an increase in EBT transactions last year, and we really want to see that continue this year. We feel the importance of making sure that everyone has access to the fresh produce that we offer is really important to us, so that's one of our main focuses this year. But as well as all of the fun that we always have with live music, our beer and wine garden, tons of fun activities for kids, we have theme nights every week. So please visit our website at MainStreetHanford.com and download the schedule. Please come out and support our farmers especially, but also our food vendors, crafters, and people that are growing their small businesses. We're so excited. We're running through May 4th to October 26th, and we're hoping to have some less hot days this year. We'll see. Last year, we canceled six markets, so hopefully not again. But thank you for all that you do, and I hope to see you at Thursday Night Marketplace. Thank you.
Thank you.
The next speaker is Sarah Hacker.
All right. Good morning, Madam DA.
Good morning, President. I first want to extend my most sincere condolences to Supervisor Verboon. I also wanted to give the board an update on our hiring difficulties. We released a recruitment for a DA investigator who was bilingual. We did not receive any qualified candidates, and we had to close the recruitment. Thank you.
That's all the speaker cards that I have, and no one online seems to have their hand raised.
Morning Chief. Yeah, anyone, anyone who's looking to make it, now's the time.
Thank you. I'm sorry I didn't fill out a card. I just wanted to inform the board of the recent passing of Battalion Chief Wayne Franks. Last Tuesday, Chief Franks passed away as a longtime employee of Kings County Fire Department. Started his career with the Corcoran Fire Department and then came across when the two agencies were combined. There is going to be a celebration of his life this Saturday at 11 o'clock at Air Monica Fire Station, Station 5. The family just notified us this morning that they wanted to do that, so it's kind of being put together on the fly here, but you're invited. Please, please attend. So, thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Anybody else? Come on up. Morning, sir. Morning, Scott.
Morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Scott Howwell, Kings County Veteran Services. First, we'd like to offer our condolences on behalf of the veterans in Kings County. And actually, on behalf of all the veterans in the state and the California Association of County Veteran Service Officers, we're grateful to Supervisor Verboon and his father, especially his father for his service. I understand he served for four years.
Yep, I got my paper too. I got the DD 214 yesterday.
You got that. Fantastic. Outstanding. Glad we're able to help you with that. And the thing that I, the point that I wanted to make is just that we're sorry for your loss. I've experienced that over the last couple of years with my own father. And the one thing I would like to say is I have people all the time that tell me because they realize that I served 30 years. They say, "Well, I only served four years." There's no only to it. An individual served. They signed the same contract that Supervisor Valley signed, that I signed, that many other people in this room signed, and that every single individual signs, and it all says the same thing. It's the same contract, and it has the same wording, and the only difference between your father's service and the service of someone who made the ultimate sacrifice is just their circumstance. That's it. God had a different path for them, and I read your daughter's tribute to your dad online, which is a beautiful tribute. It said everything it needed to say. He served his country, he served his community, and he served his family well.
Thank you. I know I'd like to add, so he did serve four years, and he had to be a reservist for several years after that, but after he left, someone dropped the bomb on the flight line, and they were all wiped out. I'm very lucky that he's still here with us.
And if he wasn't.
Yeah.
You wouldn't have been here to serve. The rest of your family would not have been here to serve as well. The other point that I wanted to make and that I wanted to do on behalf of the veterans, I didn't have the opportunity to be there. I had another thing that I was obligated to do, but thank you to Supervisor Valley and also the city of Corcoran for the fantastic event this weekend, and not only the event, but also just the beautiful statues that are down there. The folks I was talking to this weekend were just amazed at the fact that we had something like that here in Little Kings County, and it's put it on the map. Every single person I've been in contact with that I've spoken to has said that they were just amazed, and it seems like everything went off well, including the flyover at the end. So anybody that's listening online, this is world-class. Anybody that's sitting here in the room, I've been around the state, been around the country, been around the world, and I don't know that I've seen anything quite as impressive as what we have here in Corcoran, so thank you.
Thanks, Gus.
If I could add to that, so, you know, we were there at the beginning when we were negotiating with High Speed Rail, and towards the end of the negotiations, we're almost done. Rebecca Campbell was the CIO, and she said, "You know, you probably should invite Supervisor Valley." I'm like, "I don't want Supervisor Valley there. I'm almost done. I don't want to mess it up." And we're in a country club, we're in a room, and he's ants in a pants. You know, he's like, "You gotta ask for something." So we went outside, and he goes, "Hey, I want to ask for something." I said, "What do you want to ask for?" He goes, "I want to ask for a veteran memorial in Corcoran." I said, "Go ahead. Nothing to do with what we're talking about. We're trying to get overpasses at the fire station and take care of the people," and he went to veteran memorial. I was like, "Whatever," and they agreed. And so without his vision, we wouldn't be here today, so.
Well, and without your saying, "Hey, sure, ask for something," we wouldn't be here today either, so thank you.
Yeah, he really annoyed me that day, but I'm happy he did, so I'm very honored that I was part of it, and I can't wait to go see it all finished.
Thank you, Steve. And the ask was for a million dollars. We did that, and appreciate you supporting that and the board entirely because it had to be a board vote at the end of the day. And the comments for the event, I'm actually, I'm gonna save for next week because I want to do it right and make sure we don't leave out the thank yous, and maybe we'll bring a little video highlight and do it right. But I just want to stress, it was a county event, city of Corcoran event, High Speed Rail event. It's three entities. The county sent equipment, gators, tents, and the one thank you that I'll say right now too on top to the Board of Supervisors is to Scott Howwell. The flyover, we put that application in months ago. It goes through Washington DC. It works its way through the naval chain of command, and it sat for three weeks at NAS Lemoore and waiting for a squadron to pick it up. So on Monday of last week, we still didn't have a squadron pick up. Scott told me to send a letter, so Catherine fired up a letter. We sent it out. We got a phone call. I was talking to the guy, and I wasn't getting anywhere with him. And I said, "Hold on, let me get the Veteran Service Officer online." Got him on. Scott knew the guy. They served. Now I'm just on the phone, and they're chopping it up like homeboys. "Hey, what's up? What's up, Master Chief?" "Yeah, don't worry about it. Yeah. No, no, no. We'll get them planes over there. How you doing, Scott?" You know, so it came down to it. We wouldn't have the flyover without Mr. Howe. That's just the bottom line of it. So appreciate it, sir. And then I'll save the rest of comments for next week, but thank you because that was a major part. It was a beautiful part. And had to have that tribute go with those five statues at the end is something no one's ever going to forget.
It was a true team effort. It was a true team effort. I appreciate the help from everybody.
Yeah.
Catherine jumped into action on a couple of things. It just, it shows you what can happen when people that care about something get together and work together as a team to make things happen.
If we need something at the base, this man has the juice. I'm telling you right now. As a chairman of the board, didn't mean nothing out there until the old Master Chief got on the line. They started talking Navy lingo, and it got done. Thanks, sir.
You know how that can work.
Yes, sir.
If I need anything from the Marine Corps, I know who to look for.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Take care. Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Okay, all right, sir. We're gonna move forward. Next item is approval of the minutes from regular meeting for April 25th, 2023. To the chair, entertain a motion.
Nevs moves.
Second.
Verboon.
Motion by Nevs, second by Verboon. Madam Clerk, will you just call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
I'll have to abstain.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Same.
That was abstained, sir. Abstained?
Yep.
Okay. Three in favor, two in abstention. Consent counter. We have a few items. If the board has had a chance to look over those items, there's no questions or comments. The chair will entertain a motion.
Whoop. Second.
Motion by Fagundes, second by Verboon. Madam Clerk.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Thank you. Item passes five in favor. Takes us to regular agenda items. Item, hey, comes from behavior, health department. We'll be presenting that. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, and our deepest condolences Supervisor Verboon. As I say in our family, may his memory be a blessing to you. Good morning, members of the board. The Kings, I'm here representing the Kings County Department of Public Health and Kings County Behavioral Health Department to request that your board adopt a resolution to proclaim the month of May, 2023, as Mental Health Awareness Month and Maternal Mental Health Month in Kings County. Nationally, May is observed as Mental Health Awareness Month and Maternal Mental Health Month. The observance of Mental Health Awareness Month is promoted through Mental Health America. The primary purpose of the observance is to generate a greater understanding of the importance of mental health and to promote services and the natural resources available. The observance also seeks to reduce the barriers and stigma associated with individuals seeking mental health treatment and wellness programs to live a longer and healthier life. Additionally, May is Maternal Mental Health Month. The primary purpose of this observance is to raise awareness of the importance of maternal mental health and its impact on the health of the mother after delivery and the development of children, families, and communities. The mental health of the mother is often overlooked during the mother's care and postpartum checkup. In the United States, one in eight women have displayed symptoms of postpartum depression after a recent live birth, and one in three pregnant women experience clinically significant anxiety and depression symptoms during the pregnancy. If left untreated, perinatal depression and other mood disorders can worsen and begin to hinder the development of the baby and the health of the mother. Throughout May, public health in Kings County Behavioral Health, in collaboration with Kings Partnership for Prevention and the Kings County Mental Health Task Force, will be engaging the community through many means. The Community Mental Health Matters event is on May 27th from 10 to 2 at Gateway Park in Corcoran. It is hosted by the Kings Partnership for Prevention through the Mental Health Task Force. There will be radio messaging promoting the importance of mental health and the use of natural resources and services to promote one's mental health. The month-long campaign will be airing on iHeart Media in Spanish and English and en la preciosa. The community engagement via a booth at Hanford's Thursday Night Marketplace will be set up to promote local services such as Kings to Larry Warmline, the 211 Community Resource Locator, 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, Kings County Behavioral Health Support Groups, and Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Programs. The Oak Wellness Center and Wellness Fair and Community Walk will occur on May 25th from 9:00 AM to 2:00 PM at the Oak Wellness Center. And pop-up resource booths will be occurring throughout the community in Kings County, including Kings County Commission on Aging in Armona, Stratford Library, Avon Adult School, Kettleman City Family Resource Center, Lamar Christian Aid, Corcoran Senior Center, Hanford Mall, and Hanford Civic Park. And new this year, to further promote the importance of mental health, especially mental health among students and athletes, Kings County Behavioral Health has collaborated with local schools to supply their spring athletes with lime green sweatbands to consider wearing during the month of May. And Kings County Behavioral Health will be hosting pop-up resources and awareness booths at various school locations to disseminate mental health information and promote items. This resolution has been reviewed by County Council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions, comments from the board?
There's no question or comments. I'll make the motion approve as presented. Or Ricka.
Motion by Verboon, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Next item comes from the Public Health Department. They have one item. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman, Supervisors. Again, deepest condolences, Doug, and to you and your family. I'm going to introduce Serena Morris Seagan, our Nursing Division Manager, who's going to present this item.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman and members of the board. I'm here to stand before you today, representing the Kings County Department of Public Health, to announce May 6th to May 12th as National Nurses Week in Kings County. Each year from May 6th to May 12th, we take time to honor the contributions and sacrifices of those who have chosen the career in nursing. Nurses are central members of America's healthcare workforce to provide care through every stage of life, working with patients at their most intimate and vulnerable moments. From caring for patients in hospitals and clinics to providing vital healthcare services in communities, nurses play a critical role in ensuring the health and well-being of people everywhere. In Kings County, the public health nursing staff provide an aware, array, sorry, array of services aligning with the department's mission to promote and protect the health and well-being of Kings County residents through education, prevention, and intervention. These services include adult and child immunizations, sexually transmitted infection testing and treatment, tuberculosis testing and treatment, HIV/AIDS testing and case management, communicable disease investigation and prevention, and case management and outreach to the most vulnerable populations in our community. This year's theme, You Make a Difference, recognizes the many contributions nurses have made throughout the country, encourages Kings County residents to acknowledge the nurses in their lives, and provide an opportunity to show our appreciation and gratitude for the hard work, compassion, and professionalism exhibited by nurses every day. The Kings County Department of Public Health is asking the board today to adopt a resolution proclaiming May 6th to May 12th, 2023, as National Nurses Week in Kings County. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the board?
Nope, no question or comment. I'll make a motion approve as presented.
Well, Survivor Verboon, second by Fagundes. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Ma'am, is that something you'll go present to them at some point? Maybe at one of the hospitals or the clinics? Get a copy of that and go present that to some nurses. I'm happy to go with you too. All right. Thank you. Thank you. Next item on the agenda comes from Administration. CAO Martinez. Good morning.
Good morning, board members. On Tuesday, May 9th, Kings County next week will be having its annual employee recognition barbecue. The annual employee recognition barbecue committee has been working hard to ensure that this is a successful event this year. As you can notice at the front of the dais, there's hats put together as there is a hat competition. We aren't presenting them today. We just wanted to show them to everyone on WebEx and everyone here in the board chambers. The event is starting on Tuesday at 11:00 AM with a health walk. So in 1990, the Kings County Board of Supervisors adopted the employee recognition program to acknowledge the Kings County outstanding employees. This included the employee of the quarter recognition, the creation of county newsletter, and the annual barbecue. So the employee appreciation recognition barbecue provides an opportunity for board members, department heads, community leaders, jail kitchen staff to cook for and serve employees a lunch in recognition of their dedication to public service. This week, the committee would like to request that the board thank the California Public Finance Authority, the Kings Federal Credit Union, Central Valley Meat Company, Buddy's Trophy for their generosity and support of the Kings County employee with a letter of thanks. A California Public Finance Authority contributed various gift baskets. Kings Federal Credit Union and Central Valley Meat Company contributed the food, and Buddy's Trophy contributed the new annual department head hat contest trophy, which is up here next to Supervisor Rusty. At this time, we recommend to adopt a resolution proclaiming May 7th through May 13th, 2023, as Public Service Recognition Week and declaring the Kings County Annual Employee Recognition Barbecue a tobacco-free event. Also authorize the chairman to sign the letters of thanks on the behalf of the board to the California Public Finance Authority, Kings Federal Credit Union, Central Valley Meat Company, Buddy's Trophy, and other organizations for the contributions during the event. Thank you.
All right. So any questions or comments from the board on this item?
Will we have it, Joey?
It's a secret. You have to show up. You know, I don't, yeah, I want you to be able to.
Is what the time to show up, like a noonish time?
That's usually what time you get here. Yeah, yeah. So, yeah.
We need to know what.
The more blown you get.
Exactly. Uh-huh. We'll have hot dogs for you.
We need to know what the kind of food we're serving so we know how to wear, how to dress.
Just wear a hat.
Just wear a hat.
With that discussion, Mr. Chairman, as presented.
Okay, motion by Verboon. I mean, Nevs, second by Robinson. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Rusty Robinson.
Yes.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Item passes five in favor.
Inside of the barbecue, not the cooking side.
I've noticed that. Yeah, and that's fine. We'll have, we'll have.
When cleanup shows up, I disappear.
Exactly. I have noticed that too, but that's all right. We'll get it through.
I own it though. I own that, yeah.
Oh, yeah. No, no, no. And, you know, the whole staff just has worked hard to put this program together, and if weather like this is in the forecast, it'll be another beautiful day, so.
Yes, sir.
You won't be disappointed.
Yes, sir. Good work. Thank you, guys. One more item? You have item B?
Yes, so item B will be presented by Melissa Shuffle.
Okay. Good morning, ma'am.
Good morning, Chairman, members of the board. Melissa Shuffle, Administration. I'm bringing before you the jail-based competency treatment program. The Department of State Hospitals is responsible for returning to competency individuals charged with a felony who have been found mentally incompetent to stand trial. IST defendants are committed to a state hospital for care and treatment to restore competency to stand trial. For the last decade, there have been a high demand for an unlimited number of state hospital beds for treatment of IST treatment defendants. This has resulted in many defendants waiting in the county jail for months until a bed is available. The wait creates an extended period of incarceration for the defendants, delays in receiving treatment, and excessive delays in the adjudication of the criminal charges. In response to the stated challenges, the DSH established programs in county jails to deliver the same services to a defendant in a county jail that a defendant would receive in a state mental hospital. This allows inmates to begin treatment immediately upon receipt of court-ordered paperwork and eliminates the waiting period with significantly decreased the time a defendant remains incarcerated and expedites the restoration to competency process. If the sheriff's office enters into the JVCT contract, the DSH has approved eight beds for the use of the JVCT program to be used in the mental health sheltered housing of the jail. The original JVCT contract was for five beds, so it's increasing to eight. This program has been highly successful. The provider, California Forensic Medical Group. The provider, California Forensic Medical Group, also known as WellPath, provides psychiatric stabilization and restoration competency services delivered by a team of forensic psychiatrists and clinicians, similar to the state process but in the county jail, which restores competency within the county instead of waiting for a state bed on the outside facility. DSH examines multiple matrix of individual JBCT programs and its performance relative to the system-wide average of 24 programs. Continuing the trend from the prior quarter, Kings' JBCT program has performed well in different program performance areas. The program has produced a 100% restoration rate for the past three months, yielding a year-to-date average of 96% since the start of fiscal year 2223. The average time to admission indicates the JBC program is minimizing the time that patients wait for services, with admission on average occurring in less than two weeks in December. The average length of stay indicates patients remain in the program for less than 90 days and constituted a shorter duration in comparison to the system-wide average. Furthermore, the program restored patients in around two months on average and again outperformed the system-wide average for all three months. Overall, the Kings' JBCT program has consistently exceeded system-wide averages in all of the aforementioned categories. This agreement is retroactive due to negotiations with the state and the final version to be received from the state until late March. The agreement has been reviewed and approved by county council as to form. We also have Karen, the Vice President of Mental Health for WellPath, online if you would like to speak.
Thanks, Melissa. I appreciate it. Yeah, it looks like you covered it all. The jail-based competency treatment program at Kings County is one that we are most proud of. It certainly outperforms most programs, most of the 24 programs currently in the state. And it's really impressive to see that not only are we restoring people to competency and getting them back to court to get their cases adjudicated, it's usually done within 60 days, which really helps the patients and their families kind of get on with the judicial process and their lives. So if there are any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
So at this time, we request that you authorize the sheriff to sign the agreement with the Department of State Hospitals for the jail-based competency treatment program retroactively effective December 2nd, '22 through June 30, '24. Approve an agreement with the California Forensic Medical Group Incorporated for the jail-based competency treatment program retroactively effective from December 2nd, '22 through June 30, '24, and adopt the budget change.
Any questions or comments from the board on this item?
If there are no questions or comments, I'll make a motion approved as presented.
Motion by Verboon.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Second by Nevs. Madam Clerk, will you please call the row?
Joe Nevs?
Yes.
Richard Valli?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Rusty Robinson?
Yes.
Item passes five in favor. Thank you. Thanks, thank you, everyone, for your presentations. We'll move on to board member announcements, and we'll start with Supervisor Joe Nevs. Good morning.
Good, thank you, Mr. Chair. Continue to be engaged with the flooding issues. Power of the Purse luncheon was held last Tuesday at the Hanford Civic, a very nice event, over 360 people in attendance. I was, once again, opportunity drawing short. I didn't have any, didn't win anything. The cart meeting was on Wednesday where we approved the test and inspection contract for the new transit center, also approved the Southern California Edison Charging Ready Program for electric vehicles, and approved the contract with RRM Design Group to respond to the city of Hanford's changes for design improvements. We also approved the Low Carbon Transit Operations Project List and extended the contract to Brown Armstrong for auditing services. The Low Carbon Transit Operations Project List included free transit, which will probably occur in December, a couple of weeks in December for riders, and then a reduced fare pass program will be able to continue this for the next year. $20 pass buys you a three-month ability to ride the program. Currently, there are over 2,000 riders that use that, about 500 riders per quarter. The KCAC meeting, we opened the Transportation Development Act public hearing for unmet transit needs and continued it to May, so we'll continue to work on that. We approved the budget process for the 2023-2024 fiscal year, and then also had a discussion on the Valley Boys Trip in Washington, DC that second weekend in September. Also attended the Kings to Larry Master Plan for Aging Meeting in Visalia as we continue to work on those issues through that program. Had a couple of tours of the Stratford levee in need of repairs and maintenance that is the primary line of defense for the community of Stratford and the surrounding community. Attended the Kings River Hardwick Town Hall at Kings River School and talked about operations and future-related water releases as that continued to deal with just lots of water expected throughout the summer. Attended the American Legion Breakfast at Lemoore on Friday, and then first five had a special meeting, established a nomination committee for the Office of Chair and Vice Chair coming up. We approved the 2023-2024 budget and set the administrative limit as we normally do, and then accepted the annual audit for the first five, as well as send those reports up to the state. Attended the Kings County Library Book Sale that was on Saturday, very well attended. Everybody works hard for that. And then the Kings Federal Credit Union Night at the Fresno Grizzlies on Saturday night. And then today's the 40th anniversary of the Kalanga earthquake, so if you're thinking about it, about four o'clock this afternoon, a six-point, I think it was, started out 6.8 and I think it was kind of ratcheted down to a 6.2 earthquake that affected the Kalanga area 40 years ago to date. So, think about that. With that, thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
No, thanks, Nevs. I think you mentioned that it was also during the flood time, and --
Correct.
So the lake was full, the levees held with the earthquake.
Correct. As the California Conservation Corps is also in county again, doing another project on another portion of the levee, they were also on the Stratford levee on that May 2 date, wrapping the levee at that time. And they, of course, these are, you know, high school-aged kids, aren't you? Yeah, 17 to 24 or so, 18-year-olds. But they said there was four-foot waves coming across.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, you know, so it was.
Wow, unbelievable.
Yeah. But when you think about it, the lake at that time in 1983 was probably, it was higher in elevation, but area was probably about the same, about 70,000, 75,000 acres. But the elevation was probably four foot higher, four or five foot higher. And so, yeah, some of the CCC crew that was down in the lake, they actually got a little bit wet because they held, floating around.
That's, that was scary.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. Thank you for that.
Thanks.
Supervisor Fragundes, good morning, sir.
Not much, I haven't gotten out much just last week, last couple of weeks, but I've gotten a lot of phone calls and referred them to the people that had the answers that are supposed to call, and everybody seemed to be happy so far until the flood happened.
Yes, sir. Well, it's good to see you back on your feet, sir. We know you recovered, and you're one tough man. Hang in there.
No.
It takes guts to grow.
He's one old man and one tough old man.
Yeah. My dad said it takes guts to grow, so.
Ah.
Yes, sir. Supervisor?
At a certain age, you start getting shorter.
For me, that was about three years old now. Go ahead, Supervisor.
I had a busy week with my family. Thank you for all the thoughts and prayers toward my family. It was a tough time, it's something that we all have to go through, and I learned a lot, and very thankful of the life I have today from what my dad taught me, so I just really appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Good man. Sue Robinson.
Welcome back, Supervisor Fragundes. It's good to have you back. And my condolences to the Verboon family. I'm grateful that I had the pleasure of meeting your dad. Thank you to Supervisor Verboon for inviting me to the town hall meeting at Kings River Hardwood School. It was very informative. Steve Houghton was there, he's the water master of Pine Flat Dam, and David Merritt, who's the Kings River Conservation District, and also Supervisor Buddy Mendez from Fresno. So they probably characterize it at this point as cautiously optimistic, which is a good thing, but, you know, Mother Nature's going to decide what it wants to do. So just a good job to Supervisor Verboon for keeping the public informed with that. Thank you. Thank you also to Supervisor Vallade for inviting me to attend the Corcoran unveiling of the Five Pillars of Freedom. It was incredible. It's a wonderful thing for Corcoran, but also for Kings County. It is world-class, as was said, and enjoyed the whole ceremony, particularly with the veterans, always love them. I think my boy's favorite part, though, was the flyover, so thank you.
Yes, sir. Thanks for coming, I know it was hot.
Yeah, I'd like to add a little to that, too. So I was, I wasn't able to make it, but I did watch some of it on Facebook, but I know I want to thank Supervisor Vallade for putting the yellow color, my dad's favorite color, on the monument and Corcoran sign in his memory, so means a lot to my family.
Yes, sir. It's going to run yellow for a week.
He likes yellow so much because the other colors are cooler, but it's yellow.
Yes, sir.
We had about a half, 20-minute discussion about, yellow? Yeah, okay, yellow it is.
Yellow it is. Yes, sir. Well, it'll run that way for a week in his honor.
Thank you. We'll go down there tonight, we'll check it out.
Good, sir. Good, sir. I'll just be quick, like I said, I want to save the, those comments on the five pillars for next week so we could do it right, but I just want to note for the record, last Tuesday, as we all know, the governor came to Kings County, came to Corcoran, Alpa, Allensworth, and he was, he was there to help. He was very educated on the topic. He brought up Stratford specifically as well and talked about the work on those levees. And he had his staff ready to go before he left town. There was a meeting between city of Corcoran, some county folks. He had directors for OES and DWR, and they got to work on that. He wanted the, all the different opinions on what needed to be done to the levee, the price amount, he wanted everything hashed out ASAP and to get to move on it. So I did, I did, from the time I was able to spend with him, I did take away that he's very aware and is concerned for the county of Kings. Other than that, he's probably had 100 emergencies since then, and so I appreciate the time that we had with him. So with that, we'll go to CAO Martinez.
In board correspondence, your board received a memorandum of understanding from the California Mutual Aid Region for Mass Care and Shelter Supplies on April 28. Your board additionally received a Kettleman Hills Facility Eighth Annual Information Meeting Notice from May 9 at 5:30 PM. Upcoming events, we have seven events. So Cal Edison will be hosting a Free Business Education Star Workshop via Zoom on May 4 from 9:30 to 12:00 on how networks start and build a scale for success. You can contact the Tulare Kings Hispanic Chamber of Commerce for additional information. Patsy Studio will host their third annual Cinco de Mayo Festival downtown Hanford on 7th Street from 4:00 to 8:00 PM. There will be a free dance workshop, performance, and social dancing. There will be a free Kid Zone and food vendors. The food truck takeover will take place Saturday, May 6, from 6:00 to 9:30 PM on Court Street at Civic Park in Hanford. Avonel will be hosting a Weekend of Old Timers event on Friday, May 5, at 5:00 PM at the Vets Hall. There will also be a spaghetti dinner. And on Saturday, the next day, they will be hosting an OTD breakfast buffet at the Veterans Hall starting at 7:30 AM. Afterwards, there will be a parade lineup at 9:00 AM at the park. Activities to follow at 11:00 AM, and then that following evening at 5:00 PM at the Vets Hall, there will be an Avonel Old Timers Annual All Class Reunion Dinner. Tickets are $50 per person. And to finish it off, on Sunday, May 7, there will be a Tours of Discovery Well in Tar Canyon, and the meeting spot is the Vets Hall at 1:00 PM. The Kings County Sheriff's Office will be hosting the Peace Officer Memorial Ceremony on Wednesday, May 17, at 10:00 AM at the Government Center Courtyard. And lastly, the Central Valley Blood Bank will have their buses on campus for employee blood drive on Thursday, May 18, from 9:00 to 1:00 PM. For upcoming agenda items, the following agenda items are for May 16. There will be no board meeting next week. The Assessor Clerk recorder has consideration for budget transfer for approval of vehicle purchase. CDA has three items, considering a memorandum of understanding with the Kings Association of Governments for their REAP program funding for '24 through '2032 housing element update. Consideration regarding an agreement between Kings County, cities of Avonel, Corcoran, and Hanford, and Lemoore for the 2024-2032 housing element update. DA has two items, consideration regarding continued participation in some grant programs and an advanced step higher. HSA has consideration regarding approval of First Amendment with the Kings Community Action Organization for Home Visiting Program Services. Public Health has two items, consideration regarding immunization, local assistance grant, and an agreement with Haluna Health. Public Health has four items, considering the fiscal year 2324 Senate Bill One Project List and installation of multiway all stop signs at intersection of 17th Avenue and Idaho on N Avenue. Sheriff's Office has two items, consideration to approve the purchase of a human services vehicles, and consideration to adopt a resolution with the Department of Parks and Recreation. That is it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate all that good information. Does anyone have any comments on that? Good to go? All right. Well, then, I believe that takes us to the end of the agenda. Thank you, everyone, for coming today. The board will go into closed session for a conference with labor negotiator meeting conferred with the multitude of organizations listed on the agenda will stand adjourned. The next regular meeting, May 9, 2023, has been canceled due to Kings County Employees' Appreciation Event. We'll see you on the 16th, 9:00 AM. Thank you.